Pledge of Allegiance led by Karen McGregor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the vouchers in the amount of $433,725.27. Number six is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle submitted by the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department. Number seven is to acknowledge the order for organization and incorporation for the Stakel Road District as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Number eight is to acknowledge the annexation of property described as Lot 20, Lot 21, Lot 24, Lot 25, and that part of Lot 26 lying north of Coyote Flats Road and Lot 27 of Kiefer Ranch Estates to the Coyote Flats Road District as submitted by the Auditor's Office. And number nine is approval of the adopt-a-highway application for a portion of 160th Avenue by the Lone Rangers 4-H Club as submitted by the Highway Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove number five. I have some questions.
Number five. Any others? Not? Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda except for number five.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Consent item number five has been removed. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number five.
Mr. Chair, I just have some questions. This is a different...
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to get you more detailed information on the vouchers than what you've had in the past, so you actually know what department is the expense for and what their, what the description is. And when I was putting together this last packet, I realized that I didn't have the total. So you're going to get the old expel spreadsheet that we used to have in addition to the detailed spreadsheet that you have there, if that helps or answers your question.
That is kind of what I was wondering, but, you know, you, it's kind of, it's kind of confusing. Okay, so it's City of Rapid City, the Water Department, but we have four different, I'm not sure it clears up anything for me. I don't know about anybody else, but it, you know, I'm not sure it's clearing up anything for the detail. I don't know how anybody else feels, but, and, and I don't know, it just seems like it's not quite there yet, but I...
We're certainly open to suggestions. Cindy Moller in the Auditor's Office has been working with me to try and customize some of these reports to get you guys some more detailed information, so we're working through it. If you have any...
Okay.
...other questions, concerns.
Because I found this, okay, we have several different water thing, billings, but it's all kind of confusing as to who was, what particular part of, is it out at the fairgrounds? Is it out at the Highway Department? I mean, I felt that was kind of confusing here as to what it was for. If we're going to get a detail, that's okay, but, I mean, there just, some of it wasn't very clear. So I guess I just maybe need to have a little more work on it. All good.
And Mr. Chair, it's incomplete. All we have on here is water bills and cell phones, and we don't have the $433,000 itemized.
It is all itemized. The sec, this meeting is when you just approve utilities. The next, the other meeting of the month is when you approve all of the big vouchers.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Julie's coming up, sir.
It's confusing, sorry.
You can always come up and look at all the individual vouchers. We're just not going to bring them down here.
Sure.
You are.
And, and so, you know, to get you the amount of detail you need could not, maybe could not be possible unless you physically come and look at the vouchers, which is always open to you. We, we scan them all. Can you get into all the scans? Yeah. So everything is scanned into the Springbrook system now. You don't even actually come off to, have to look at our office either. But, so it's, it could be difficult to get, each commission changes with what information they want on the voucher list. You know, we can do full detail, but we don't want to print five copies of that out. So, yeah, just work with us to, to try and see and, to get you the information in a, in a format that you feel comfortable approving it is, is all that. Hopefully, we can, we can get it to that point.
Okay.
But if you ever want to see an individual one...
You just email me and I can pull it right up for you.
Yeah, or Cindy. Your name is Julie Pearson, our auditor? Did you introduce yourself at the beginning of the meeting? No. No?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number five under consent.
A second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 10.
Item 10 on the agenda today is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 19th, 2015. I made a mistake at the last meeting. I pulled the wrong road district, road district off of consent to correct the legal description. For that, I apologize. I, I made a mistake and pulled the wrong one. So today, what's in front of you is to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2015 with the corrected legal descriptions as submitted in your memo.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is executive session. Do we have a motion?
Move to go into executive session per SDCL 1-25-2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Think they should take very long, shouldn't it?
No, it will not take long. Okay, we need a motion to come out of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn executive session. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, any future, I make a motion that, on a... Good question.
Or Jagle.
That, that any, any future use of, of any building here on this campus is the responsibility of, of the Pennington County Commission and of the Building Committee, and therefore any use which is being suggested by the state or any outside agency be run through the Building Committee that we have in place prior to anything being done. And that we notify the state of, of our position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
That's open for amendment, George.
How about a firm amendment? All, all county facilities belong to Pennington County.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Not just this campus, but all facilities.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item is item 12, Safety and Justice Challenge Grant Award.
Good morning. Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff, and I have Judge Davis here with me. We're the co-chairs for the Planning Committee that's been established for this grant, and we want to give you a little background, but also, we have a number of other partners here with us that are going to speak to the grant and give you a little bit of background. And just want to tell you, it was very much a collaborative effort from the state and the county partners that came together to make this happen. And it's a Safety and Justice Challenge Grant put up by MacArthur Foundation. It's a $75 million grant that they put up. And the focus is to look at county jail populations. If you remember, the last couple of years, the state spent a lot of time looking at Department Corrections populations and the, and that side of it. So this is a focus specifically at jail populations, so that'll be, that'll be good for us. And the same philosophy under the Public Safety Improvement Act is here, is that the goal is not to compromise public safety, still do good public safety, but spend our money wisely, and can we do something different with our processes and our systems to make us more efficient. So it truly is a win for Pennington County, but with that, I'll be quiet and let the judge say something.
The sheriff has said it all. We did put a team together.
You are. You are.
Jeff Davis. I thought, I thought the sheriff's introduction would cover that, Commissioner. We did put a team together who's just returned from Washington, DC from an, an early-on training session, and I know they're going to come up and give you a report. This is a big deal, and it's a big deal for Pennington County. It says, I think it's a credit to the whole criminal justice community here that we managed to be in on the first round of the grant and brought some valuable information back. So with that...
And there will be one housekeeping thing down the road. There's, the grant's for $150,000, and there is a, an agreement that the chair has to sign, so that will require a motion for his, his signature, and then we'll work with the Auditor's Office to bring that supplement forward. We'll supplement it into the sheriff's office budget. We've agreed to be the fiscal agent in that phase for some of the travel and other things associated with this first phase of the grant. But we have the state's attorney here, and I know Eric and others are here, if they want to come up and give a little background about the kickoff meeting to DCs.
Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. The idea behind the grant and the idea behind our participation is that, given the jail numbers that we've seen, the increases that we've seen over the last 20 years, there are mechanisms that we will be able to explore, hopefully with the grant, that otherwise we might not have access to. And certainly, if we get to Phase Two of the grant, there are services that we might be able to utilize that would reduce jail populations, reduce costs to the county, and yet be completely consistent with public safety. And so that's the challenge, obviously, but it also gives us a little bit, instead of having to come to the commission and ask for an investment for down the road, we've actually got somebody else that's helping us take care of that. So I think it's a very exciting opportunity for Pennington County, and Tracy Decker with my office got to go out to DC with Eric, so I'll let him, since he was there, talk about the actual trip to DC.
Eric Witcher, Director of the Public Defender's Office. This is a very exciting time, and I want to just kind of give some, some of the basics of the grant and what it is. 191 jurisdictions from 45 different states applied for this grant. And Pennington County is one of 20 that was awarded the first round, which is $150,000. We have access to all of the who's who of experts in criminal justice reform across the country. So we're going to get amazing support. In addition, we're going to be able to use $150,000 to find a great plan, like what Mr. Vargo just discussed, ways in which we could reduce our jail population. In January 3rd, our second submittal is due and to the MacArthur Foundation, and they will select 10 jurisdictions of the 20 that have already been selected, and they will get two mil, up to $2 million in funding per year with the option of a third year, so a total of $6 million per jurisdiction. So this is real money. It's exciting money because we could do a lot of wonderful things with that kind of money. If you look at the map, you can see we're kind of right out there in the middle of nowhere. The competition, everyone got to do a lightning round. Judge Heidi Lindgren was with us in DC as well as Barry Tice and, and Brian Mueller from the Sheriff's Department, and as Mark said, Tracy Decker and myself. And Judge Lindgren represented us very well, but I can tell you those 20 jurisdictions want this money too, that we're going to be in a fight. We're going to have to be very innovative, very collaborative, which we are, and, and put it together some great programs to really reduce our jail population. And so that's going to be the focus going forward. One of the things that they pointed out to us is, they now have, you know, there's been really 30 or 40 years of, let's lock people up, and let's, longer, faster, for more people. And what they found now is a lot of times that does not help. It doesn't deter, even if somebody is put in jail in a nonviolent minor crime for two to three days, the odds of them recidivate increases, that goes, doesn't go down. Jail should be used as one of the last resorts and as something, I mean, it's between there and, and execution. There's no, there's no place in between those two points. And so there's so many opportunities that we have to improve public safety and also reduce our jail population. They talked about the timing and the national debate is now. Every candidate who has come out and, and for the presidency of the United States has publicly stated that the, that criminal justice reform is a priority in the United States and the overutilization of jails. And so that, you go from Bernie Sanders on one side and Hillary Clinton to Marco Rubio, Rand Paul, everyone is talking about this topic. The Council of Chief Justices, which consists of all 50, the Chief Justice of all 50 states, as well as the counties and territories, has said this is a priority. Chiefs of Police have said this is a priority. Department of Justice, your organization, the National Association of County Commissioners, has said this is a priority. Why? Because you write the checks. You know what it costs as far as a jail is concerned. So it's an exciting time in our nation's history. This is a moment, and we've got an opportunity to get some real money, to make some real changes. So I'm very excited about it, and I know Mr. Tice, I think, has some things to say as well, but I'll also have any, if you have any, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do. Chair, why is this grant any different than the juvenile justice and the adult justice reform? What are you doing different than what the state is doing, and why do you need a grant at this point to do something that the state is doing? What, what are the mechanisms that you're doing different?
I'd be happy to, you, go ahead.
I was going to step up in part because of the certainty of it. What the state has said is, we want to try to reduce the number of people that are in the state penitentiary. I know that the sheriff worked on the original Senate Bill 70, tried very hard to make sure those costs didn't just rebound to the counties, but I don't know that we were completely successful in that. And what the state has basically said is, we're going to try to put programs around you to ensure that we don't have to put people in the pen, but we can still hopefully protect the citizenry. This allows us to have a much more direct impact on Pennington County's population and to decide for ourselves what programs are the most appropriate. We'll certainly make use of anything that the state has sent us. The, the Veterans Protocol that we're working on, the DUI court that we've already implemented, the drug court that we've had for a while. All of those things are positive, I think, for us, but they don't replace the idea that there are still things that could be done, that instead of trying to talk the state into doing something for us, we would actually have the decision-making authority.
There you go. So it's, it's more at a local level?
It is.
And, and on these grants, most of the time when I've seen grants, they've added more FTEs. Is there any stipulation that you guys were going to add more FTEs when this program was, and this grant was done?
Is, did you want to answer that, Sheriff?
I'm in from your meeting, but, again, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. Under this first $150,000, there is some money in there to hire a contract person or two if we want to for this next six months, to help with data analysis and maybe some other program design that we might need. I don't know beyond that if there's going to be a need for an FTE or not. If we get awarded $2 million, we may come to the commission and say, we need an FTE funded by this grant to carry out some of the programs, but I don't think we'll know that until we know what level of funding we get.
So it won't be from the budget now and the budget in the future to add more FTEs for these programs?
I think what, what I would say is, the, the important thing right now is not to, to decide exactly what we're going to do. It's, it's a study of all the numbers, what's driving our jail population. There's a lot of things, I, I can tell you that we can probably fix, that isn't going to cost an FTE at all. I was over at initial appearances, for example, yesterday, met a lady who'd been there for three days, picked up on a warrant for an open container, had a $25 cash bond and sat there for three days because she couldn't bond out on $25. We could fix that without an FTE deciding on who should be in there and who should not. There's a, what is also something that happens in most jurisdictions now that have, have already tackled some of these issues, is they looked at what's called a risk and needs assessment instrument when somebody is booked into the jail. What is this, what is the risk associated with this person? What do they need? And make that evaluation, so the court has good information about what bond they should set or what programs they should set. And oftentimes, it's not a bond. What the person might really need is to make sure they get right into treatment or something to that effect. So, so that's another thing where you might have, we might need somebody that, but it's be a, a person that is going to be very important and could reduce the jail population, which hopefully reduce some FTEs as well. So...
That's what I was going to say. It might make it more efficient...
It might.
...by the time you're done by, seeing what the problem areas are.
But for right now, we want to, we want to leave this open. We've got all of these experts that are going to be coming here and helping us figure out what could be the best plan. And at the end of the day, we're going to have to bring it all before you all, so.
Thank you.
And in the process, they assigned us two technical assistant providers, and those are funded by the MacArthur Foundation. They'll be on site for at least five different visits between now and the end of the year to help us come up with our plan. That's their job. The first week they're here is June 22nd. They'll be here that week to start mapping our systems. And I think Eric brings up a good point. We've already done some things locally, and I'll use electronic monitoring as an example. You know, we're, we get 40 or 50 people a day out of the jail, and we didn't add any FTEs, and that's something we did locally with our collaborative here. So those are the things we'll be looking for. Pennington County's already won in this deal by making the first cut of 20, because somebody's going to come in and put us under a microscope and tell us how we can do things better. And at the end of the day, we don't get $2 million, we're still going to benefit from it.
I appreciate that, Kevin. And I did meet with Mr. Witcher when I first came here, and we discussed this, so it's pretty cool that he's moved forward on this with you guys to do something better for Pennington County with their stuff. I just, my main issue was, what was the difference between SB 70, SB 73, but you've told me.
Good morning. Barry Tice, Health and Human Services. And I can't say it much better than the other gentlemen spoke about this grant, but I get pretty excited when we talk about community collaboration. And what I can tell you is, from these 20 different agencies that were represented or communities at this foundation meeting, we definitely stood heads above the rest when it came to collaboration, and it's pretty impressive when you talk about New York City, Los Angeles, and Pennington County, South Dakota is, so, so we're doing things right. We can do things better. And MacArthur Foundation really emphasized the fact that this is a dare, because they've put the money behind it, so we just need to figure out what we can design and look at the, the different systems. And, and so that's where my agency comes into play, is because we're an outsider when it comes to the criminal justice system, but we have some pieces that have been working with the criminal justice system. So, so it's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman, I make a motion that you sign the acknowledgement and, and acceptance of the MacArthur grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, obviously, I fully support what's being, being presented to us and what the MacArthur Foundation is suggesting in the letter to, to you, to we, the county commissioners, jail misuse and overuse. My goodness gracious, I, I guess I don't know anybody that's experienced that concept, but having said that, my experience in this county is, 29 years ago, there was one little B facility, holding facility over here, two dozen, three dozen beds, and now there's 600. The population's probably doubled, but from, let's say, 25, 30 beds to 600. It's time for a sea change in law enforcement, in the judicial system, prosecution. Get away from guilty until proven innocent. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 13.
Good morning, Chairman Peterson, members of the commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager, going to visit with you quickly this morning about, live or is it Memorex? About the water that we have in our county right now. Commissioner Hadcock asked that I give a brief presentation, and any opportunity to, to get our message or information out to the public is a, is an opportunity I'll jump at. So thank you, Commissioner Hadcock, for giving me the opportunity to do this. If you don't like the weather, stick around five minutes. About three or four weeks ago, Mother's Day weekend, I was in the office all weekend dealing with the potential significant snowstorm and blizzard. The following week, we had communications from the, the FSA about the abnormally high drought conditions that we had in Pennington County, leading to federal subsidies, and I was actually working on the disaster declaration to bring before you for drought conditions for rancher relief. And then the last two weekends, I've been in the office dealing with floods. So...
South Dakota weather.
If, if nothing but, but unpredictable and, and keeping emergency management on its toes. Let me preface this all by saying, it's always an honor not to work only for, for the county and the city, but it, it's just amazing, the, and I heard collaborations brought up, speaking about that grant, and the collaboration we have between all of our stakeholders, not just the, the incredible first responder community in Pennington County, but all of our stakeholders as well. Bureau of Reclamation, Army Corps of Engineers, National Weather Service, the School of Mines and Technology. It, it is amazing the amount of, of resources, collaboration, and communication that happens in this county, and it's an honor to be a part of that. So, the water that we have, everybody likes to say, I remember when, or I remember this, or, or, yeah, Atlas was bad, but, but boy, you should have remembered that children's blizzard back in, in the 30s. Everybody always has a, a one-upmanship story. But when it comes to some of the water that we're seeing in our, in our watersheds now, there is no historical precedent in, in our record-keeping or our living memory. There's more water in Pactola Lake now than there ever has been since the dam was constructed in the 50s. We, we have eclipsed the last high watermark that was set in 1960 by a little over a foot, and our inflows are still higher than our outflows. So, right now, we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern. The, the inflows are decreasing. There is less and less water coming in. The problem is, all it takes right now is, is one well-positioned thunderstorm. Last night, we certainly had some, some out-of-state storm chasers setting up and watching that system that positioned itself over Meade County that caused some issues on, on Elk Creek. Nobody that I've talked to can remember Interstate 90 being shut down in that area because of water over the road. So, again, some, some absolutely incredible things that are happening out there. As, as kind of a counterpoint, just to say where we're at, the highest inflows we've seen to Pactola here in the last week have been up to 718 cubic feet per second coming into Pactola. Just as a, a reference, last year, the highest we saw was 271. In 2013, 82 cubic feet per second was the highest inflow we saw coming into Pactola Lake, and back in 2012, 103. And again, within this last week, we've seen 718. So that gives kind of a, a, a quick snapshot of just how much water is in these watersheds, in these drainages. It should be noted that as soon as our lakes exceed their normal storage pool and, and go into, into their flood pool, the management of that water is taken over by Army Corps of Engineers, or Bureau of Reclamation, basically. And, and so, the outflows and the releases and the plan of how to deal with that water moves to federal organizations. And a lot of people still have that in their, in their consciousness, looking back to the, to the spring floods in 2011 on the Missouri River. People were asking, why was so much water being released? Well, the people that are making those decisions are looking at an entire system and how to manage the flooding as best they can along an entire system, not necessarily an individual community. And we see the same thing in our area. As, as water moves into those flood pools, those decisions are made by, by federal organizations that manage the, the entire watershed, not, not just the, the local water rights of Pactola Lake. So, but the lake aside, it's a really, really, really big dam. You'd need another 40 feet before anything went over the spillway. So Pactola's an amazing facility. It served us very, very well. But the amount of... But the amount of water we have just region-wide is insane. We've seen some near historic crests in, in Grizzly Bear Gulch and Keystone. A lot of inundation of, of some of the bridges in Keystone happens when we get, when we get those events. We've seen historic crests on some of the gauging station in Spring Creek, Rapid Creek up at Johnson Siding, some of those areas. We're, we're seeing numbers that we, we've never seen before, so it's, it's pretty impressive. The concern for emergency management truly is, is public safety. How do we keep people safe and, and minimize impact to infrastructure? Because at the end of the day, somebody writes a check to fix that infrastructure. We have all of our known hotspots. We have areas on North Haynes that get inundated, South Valley Drive that gets inundated, Green Valley, Rapid Valley, when we look at Anderson Road and, and Reservoir Road. We have our spots that we know see trouble. One of the interesting things, and it's been said before, but it's been so well exemplified over the last couple of weeks, is living in this area is kind of like living in a hydrological shooting gallery. Where the water falls completely dictates where you see problems. If it falls over multiple drainages, then everybody gets a little and it's okay. If all that fall, water falls in one drainage, we get events like the 72 flood or events like the, the Red Rock Meadows in 97, or Battle Creek just a few years ago, or just a couple of weeks ago, the White River that, that goes down through South Dakota into Nebraska. So, it really depends on where those storms sit. The, the water that we've seen coming out of Battle Creek, Grizzly Bear Creek, kind of, of east of Rapid City was, was crazy. We were seeing problems in Rapid Creek, in Rapid Valley, in Farmingdale, and everything in town was relatively calm. And that's, that's just an atypical situation. So, it, it really does keep us all on our toes as to how to best communicate that risk to the public, that threat to the public, and how to keep people safe. So, the other thing I want to touch on, again, that collaboration, it's, it's humbling to be involved in conference calls and communication from, again, Bureau of Reclamation, Army Corps of Engineers, Rapid City Water Department, the National Weather Service, in saying, "Hey, these are what we're seeing. These are the flows we're thinking about. How does this impact Rapid City and the other communities in Pennington County? You know, how, how do we best communicate our message and, and keep people safe?" So, we are certainly, through my office, we are being engaged in the discussion on, on how best to manage the, the threats that, that our community is facing right now. As we move forward, there's still a, a lot of saturation in the ground, so basically any precipitation that falls, depending on what drainage it falls in, ends up running somewhere, whether it be Spring Creek or, or any of the other drainages. One thing that, again, is an atypical situation that really bears bringing to attention, and I know there's quite a few people in the audience that, that can speak and personally attest to the impact, is the duration. We are used to flash flooding. So, a storm system moves over, the, the creeks or the drainage rapidly rises, but the other side of that equation is it rapidly falls. So, usually when we're looking at a, at a flood event on Rapid Creek or a flood event on Grizzly Creek or, or Battle Creek, it's usually measured in hours. By the time we get mobilized and get things going, the water is usually receding. What, what I have not seen in, in my institutional memory in emergency services in this area is the long-term duration, the, the flows in Spring Creek through Hill City, I'm sure Commissioner Farabee can attest, and again, as, as many people in the audience can, the flows of, of Spring Creek through Hill City are, are staggering, not only in their, their volume, but more importantly, the duration. Anytime a community or anytime a group of homes is cut off from emergency access, first responders in my office get a little nervous. Anytime we can't get in somewhere with, with fire trucks or ambulances, it's a concern. Usually that dice is rolled in a matter of hours. So, we can't get there for a few hours, but in a few hours, we can. The folks up past the sawmill in Palmer Gulch, this is, this is day nine. Yesterday was day eight, and, and luckily they can get across today, I believe, which, which is a huge sigh of relief on, on my end. But eight days of, of not being able to have emergency vehicle ingress or egress, let alone the impact to the residents in the, in that area of trying to, to get out of, of their homes. And if, if we need more information on that, I'm sure there's, there's folks in the audience that, that live up that particular road that would love to, to speak to you about that. But it's, it's concerning for me when we have these areas that, that frequently are cut off from emergency services, and, and the one, the, the amazing thing this time has been the duration that they've been cut off. We typically don't see that. So, the, the pucker factor, so to speak, has been significant, especially in that area over the last few days because the, the water came up but stayed up, and that, that's not something we typically see. The last thing that, two other quick points that I want to touch on, and then I'll be happy to stand for questions, are our efforts to inform the public. We've done, my office, my deputy Alexa and myself have done numerous interviews with the Rapid City Journal, with all of our local news media outlets, all the TV stations, Kelloland, we've, and then the, the great thing, again, the collaboration, is we have a group of PIOs, or Public Information Officers. The, the Fire Department has one, the Sheriff's Office has one, the Police Department has one, City of Rapid City has one, my office has one. They're a very close, tight-knit group, and we amplify messages from each other. So, when we put out a flooding, a, a message or alert or warning, all the other organizations, you know, rebroadcast and amplify that message. So, we've got a great structure in place. We share information between agencies and push information out through all the, the channels that we have, traditional media, radio broadcast, TV broadcast, as well as social media, the two big ones being Twitter and Facebook, but WordPress and blogs, and it goes on and on. We do everything we can to reach out to the community with, with our messages of, of safety and warning, and, and I think we do a pretty good job in this area. And that I wanted to segment into the use of the sirens. Right now, we're fielding calls, and Alexa's doing interviews as we speak on sirens. And so, a siren gets activated, like last night, based on a National Weather Service flash flood warning. And people say, "Well, we've been under a flood warning for, for a week. Why, why were the sirens set off last night?" Well, we, there's a difference between a flood warning and a flash flood warning. The sirens are used for, for life-threatening situations that can occur very rapidly. Tornadoes are something that, that commonly comes into people's heads, flash floods, hazardous materials releases, those type of events. And so, when people ask me, "Why were the sirens set off?", my answer is yes. And it, it's not a grammatical error. The intent of outdoor public warning sirens is to let somebody who's outside know that there is a significant threat to their safety. It doesn't specify what that threat is. We can't communicate what that threat is over a siren. What it lets people know is that they have to go seek more information from an official source, whether that be NOAA Weather Radio, All Hazards Radio, whether that be EAS over broadcast TV or radio. The outdoor public warning sirens are not a threat-specific tool. They are a, a broad letting people outdoors know that there is a threat, and they know, need to go get specific information on what protective actions they need to take. So, when people ask me, "Why were the sirens set off?", again, the answer is, "That's exactly right. Why were the sirens set off?" The sirens don't tell you what the threat is. The sirens say that there is a threat. You need to go get more information from an official source. So, again, I, I truly appreciate the opportunity to come, share that message with, with everybody that, that may be watching, and, and certainly with you to share with your constituents. So, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Dustin?
I'd just like to thank you, Dustin, for coming and informing us and the public of what's happening in Rapid City with the water and why the sirens are going, which was gonna be one of my questions, and then just the public information and how you figure out what is happening in Rapid City, so, and how you get that word out. Thank you, Dustin.
Mr. Chair, obviously you've been busy. Have you had any thought about contacting FEMA to come out and take a real close look at floodplains?
I guess I'd need a little bit of clarification. I have not, no, but if there's something that needs to be done, I'm certainly willing to listen to, to what you think might be appropriate.
Since this is maybe not a thousand-year record, but a, a record, you can sit at, at a computer or, or whatever and, and play for days and days and days and come up with maps for floodplains, but it's noth, nothing like going looking.
Yep.
And Hill City's a perfect example. Supposedly Hill City, supposedly has got, FEMA's got a CFS beyond belief. What a wonderful time for somebody from FEMA to come take a look at what's really there. Take a look at reality. Get away from the desk, get away from computers, get away from whatever, and come and take a look. Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I, I think there is a contingent from, from Spring Creek. Anybody want to speak, if, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Vic, anybody, any you want to, want to speak?
Good morning. I've talked to most, most of you already.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Pardon me?
Identify yourself.
Jim Dean from Hill City. I live on Palmer Gulch Road.
The reason, the reason we do that is that people that watch these tapes-
Okay.
-need to know who's speaking.
Sure, okay. Yeah. I live on Palmer Gulch Road, and I also have a business right there on Palmer Gulch Road that's affected by the, the drainage of Spring Creek running through that area. And, you know, it's been, like, like he said, it's been, you know, just a little here and a little there, but with the, with the bug tree situation that's happened in our drainage, I feel that we're gonna continue to get these high volumes of water a lot more frequently. And where we are there on our crossing, the pipe that's in our crossing, I feel is about a third the size that it should be for that area in the creek, because we have two drainages. We have Spring Creek drainage and we have Newton Creek drainage. Those have both been running high levels, and Newton Creek is still running a higher level than we've ever seen. Those come together, and in Hill City, right in town, they flow together from there to Sheridan Lake. That particular part of the lake, of the creek has been very high, but the creek has handled it in most places there. It's stayed in its banks, it's spread out a little bit, except for right where we are. There's a pipe, the pipe that's in the creek there is a third of what it should be. It should be at least two-thirds bigger to, to handle the flow of Spring Creek so that Spring Creek can actually flow through there as it, as it should, instead of backing up. It backs up into our business, it backs up all the way up the creek into, into people's places and blocks our roads. So, I guess I would like to see something, some kind of a plan put together to replace that pipe with something that can actually handle the flow. It's been a problem for, I've been up there 20 years and it's been a problem that whole time, but it's basically just too small of a pipe for that drainage area. And I guess that's all about, all I have to say about. And, and I know there's some people here that would really like to talk about the safety aspect of that, because we've all been basically trapped on an island for nine days. And we do have some backways we can get in, but when it rains, we can't. So, it's basically walking in, walking out. 17 families in that area. That's about all I have, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anybody else from the Hill City contingent want to speak?
I'm Vic Alexander from Hill City, and I just flagged Craig.
Craig Comer, Hill City Fire Chief for Hill City.
I guess what we've kind of spent, I happen to live up, up in Palmer Gulch, off Palmer Gulch Road there too, so it has been all a menagerie of plans to get in and out of there over the course of the last few days, but Sarah?
Oh, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Sarah Booth. I'm one of the co-directors of the Hill City Ambulance Service.
It's just been a menagerie of getting in and getting out. There used to be like 12, 14, 16 different ways through the national forest to get in and out of that particular area, and we almost have to feel like we've got to apologize, I should apologize to, because we're not a whiny bunch. We pretty much take care of ourselves most of the time, but it's just getting to be kind of a, really a common thing now with the, the bug, you know, the Rocky Mountain pine bark beetle has, you know, bear, bear, the Boy Scout camp, Bear Mountain is where the, some of the first hotspots. The trees are gone, you know, there's a lot of trees gone, and there's a lot of water getting to the ground, getting into the ground. It's shedding, and it's going into Spring Creek, it's going into all the different drainages, and that effect is gonna be, it's just gonna continue to grow as time goes on. I think from a preemptive standpoint, we need to, to do something with that, that, that crossing there on, on Palmer Gulch. We've kind of talked to each other every day to be able to figure out, well, where could we land a helicopter? Where's a, an LZ for this? Or how can we get a brush truck in there to fight a house fire because we can't get a fire truck in there? Those type of things. And it's been a, you know, quite a consternation this last week trying to, you know, do our, do our own thing, whoever we are, and, and the fire department, ambulance. Luckily, we haven't had anything happen, and we, you know, missed the, missed the pitch again this time, but from a proactive standpoint, I've got to do what James is talking about, try to get out ahead of it for the next time, whenever that is. Could be, could be Thursday. Could be Thursday, because Spring Creek's coming down, but just a couple of tence, couple, three, four tence every day, all it takes is another Tilford thing at Bear Mountain, you know, 20 miles west of Hill City, and all of a sudden, boom, we're, we're, we're down for another few days. So, I just, I just like to promote the idea to plan and be proactive, if we could, please. Thanks.
I'm speaking for the fire service. 17 families live in there, and if you take an average number, you know, it could run anywhere from 34 to 68 people in that proximity. I don't have the demographics on age or, or whatever, but physically, we cannot get a fire engine that would be a structure-rated type engine into that, into that area. We just cannot do it. And I don't know, one of our ambulances is, is an all-wheel drive, and Sarah, I don't think that-
Yeah, we have, we have a four-wheel drive ambulance, but I mean, it's, it's not recommended to go off-roading in a, in an ambulance, so, you know, to not be, to not have usable roads to get into where we need to get to really complicates what we try and do, so.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess for, for County Highway, I don't know, do you periodically update the five-year road and bridge plan? Is there a specified time, or do you do it just, just whenever? And, and you don't have to answer the question, but it looks like with what's happened, especially in this area, it's time to, to relook at the road and bridge plan. Thank you.
Any others?
Sure, I have one. Craig, in the last like five to 10 years, how many times has that road flooded? Because this is-
Minor flooding, I would say, if you'd let me go 10 years, because we had a little bigger influx a few years ago, I would say half a dozen times. Maybe not to the extent that we couldn't get through it, but certainly water over the road and some, some concerns about getting soft around the edges.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you. And thank you, Dustin. Next item is-
Chairman, before we go on, I think there's another side to the story, and we all know that this is serious, that needs a looking at. But I talked to our highway superintendent, and there is another side to the story. Can we listen to it?
Sure.
Tom Wilson, County Highway. There is an issue that we have with the, part of this too, is immediately downstream about 200 feet, there are two pipes that go through the sawmill. I feel, I don't know what size they are. I've heard hearsay that they're 36-inch pipe. If that's the case, they're undersized. They're causing water to back up too. Without going into a full hydrologic explanation of it, you back water up on, to the outlet of your pipe, it'll slow it up on the inlet too. So, I think it's gonna take some study. And like I said, I haven't seen these pipe. I'm going to when the water goes down enough so that we can see it, because back in, excuse me, in 1985, Corps of Engineers okayed a certain size of pipe to go through there, and I don't know if that's been met. So, I'm gonna have to study this a little more when the water drops so I can look at it. But I will look at it.
And, and do we, since that's Spring Creek, do we need a flood study or survey to see by us getting a bigger pipe, we're allowing more water to go downstream, we're gonna flood out somebody else that isn't being flooded right now, and that is also a problem?
That is also a problem. That is an issue, but with the two-pipe downstream-
Yep.
-we'll see what, I, without a full study, I can't tell you what would happen. I'll be honest.
Chair, I'll have to-
It's just supposition on my part.
To agree, because I, I was worried about the pipe size too, because if you increase the flow downstream, you're not gonna help anybody flooding them out. The other thing is, is when I went with Brittany and a few people for Spring Creek, there's a lot of people in that floodway that have built in that floodway, and there needs to be some certain repair in areas, which Brittany and, and her folks are helping with, but it, it's a huge issue building in that floodway, and in Hill City, there's a lot of people in there. So, that's probably not helping the influx of those waterways at all either.
That and the trash and stuff that we saw floating downstream. We saw mattresses, we saw pallets, we saw-
So, that's probably not helping the influx of those waterways at all either.
That and the trash and stuff that we saw floating downstream. We saw mattresses, we saw pallets, we saw everything coming downstream.
The minute you put people in, in areas that maybe...
We have not been able to get in there to see if that pipe's partially plugged. I don't think it is the way it's acting. I was up there yesterday.
But I agree on the, to, to do a study before you change a pipe. Just like a creek, if you change a creek anywhere, you need to do a study because you're going to create issues for other people once you change that creek.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion though, that Highway Department does take a very serious look at this and this, and what we can do with it, and I, and I appreciate the fact that it might have to wait until the water goes down, but...
We'll have to.
I don't imagine you have any scuba gear out there.
Is there a second?
And then that to current, no.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further comments or discussion?
Is there any solution for these people in the, for if it floods again, or are we going to find any solution for that? Or we're just going to wait till it happens again and find that then?
Ask Dustin. He knows.
The main issue is that they can get in and out.
Where it's going to rain, where it's going to rain, how much?
I can tell you, it's just not right. I'll, I'll say, again, the length of time is concerning. The question is, how long are those areas not accessible? What we do is work with the local responders, obviously Craig and Sarah are, are very competent emergency response professionals, and you, you come up with plans. Vic was talking about landing zones. Well, landing zones are great if a helicopter can fly. If a helicopter can't fly, that kind of takes that off the table. But through grants in the, in previous years, specifically Homeland Security Grants, a lot of organizations have, have increased their capabilities in terms of being able to access different places. And specifically, I'm talking about UTVs or all-terrain vehicles, including tracked UTVs. So it is not a, a typical normal, get a big box ambulance or a type-one structure engine into these, these places. So that risk is there. If your house catches fire, there's a huge, huge risk in not being able to get a structural engine there. As far as life safety, as far as somebody who's having a heart attack or breathing difficulty or severe trauma, you know, what we do is look at pre-planning and, and being able to drive maybe a, a tracked UTV with a patient litter over, over off-road.
So Dustin, they, they do have a second access, so the emergency vehicles at this point, if there was more flooding, could get in and out without using a helicopter?
Well, right now, the, the road is, I think Tom's re-graveling it today. So I think as of today, the structure engine and ambulance can get in there. When water's over the top of that, no, there is no second way to get those vehicles in there, there just isn't.
And my question then would be, pre-planning, you said, does search and rescue have a tracked vehicle that'll go over through that, that we can park up there somewhere in case it does rain?
Not a vehicle that goes through the water. It would be, again, a back road, a Forest Service road, able to get into those residents. And the issue with staging, we looked at that with Keystone, and there's situations where that could be viable. One of the issues is, is with a volunteer organization getting those vehicles pre-positioned and pre-stationed where you need them, and with a limited number, the question is if you station that in Hill City and yet it's, it's a, you know, a Hermosa or a Hayward or a, a, a Wasta or, or someplace else in the county that ends up needing it, is it, the arguments, and I don't have the answer, the, the straight answer for you, Ron, we'd have to look at an individual scenario, but honestly, keeping those resources somewhat centrally located and being able to deploy them where they're needed sometimes is a better strategy, not always, and we'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. Having that ability to get into an area like Spring Creek, if it floods and stays flooded for the, the week that we've seen it flooded, I think there's a lot of validity to pre-staging resources there, but I don't make those calls.
Who does?
For search and rescue, it's administered by the Sheriff's Office. Search and res, search is, is administered by the Sheriff's Office and that organization is underneath the Sheriff's Office, but as far as the people and, and pre-positioning those resources, I don't know who specifically would have the authority to make that, that decision.
I guess, just my suggestion is maybe you and the sheriff can talk about it at least.
Certainly, be happy to.
Would nice to, be nice to have a plan for the, the people, the 17 families there in case an emergency did happen.
Correct.
Okay, let's see.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend...
We need to vote on the motion, yeah, do we not?
I'd like to amend the motion to...
You want to restate your motion?
Not particularly.
I only have about half of it. I'm going to have to listen to the tape, but...
Essentially, the motion was to...
Have, have the Highway Superintendent take a look at, see what we can do and if we need to get a hold of the lumber mill or expand what we've got and, and what that would entail, I guess.
That's essentially the motion.
Mr. Chair, my amendment would be that, since the court...
Before you make that motion, which...
Come up, sir, and identify yourself, please.
Carl Jefferson, resident of Palmer Gulch. Before you do vote on that, which you should, when he does his study, ask him or give a hint approximately how much of money it's going to take to do it. He's out fixing our road today at a cost that when he does fix it, has to take it out. He just fixed it less than 12 months ago, less than 12 months ago. Ask him how much money they put out there. It's a, not a yearly deal, but this year, it was to the day. I had to stay home. I could mail and, I don't want to get into that, but it's a, out of the last 10 years, six or seven, no-go. Ambulance, anything but a helicopter, no-go. Doesn't make sense.
I'm in favor of doing whatever it takes today to, to solve the problem.
I just don't want you or, to spend any money, too much money, on the research as when you can just take your couple pieces of machinery out and put in a said culvert. That's what you're going to end up doing.
And, and I would agree, except we're not sure that that's going to solve the problem. If it's, if it's dammed up down at the lumber mill because the water can't get through, then putting a big, putting a big culvert in doesn't do anything.
Okay, okay. I think we have a motion and a second and we have, we are supposed to act on the motion and talk about the motion until we do vote on it.
Thank you.
Once again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend the motion to, to include actively involving the Corps of Engineers in this problem. As I understand, the Corps of Engineers handles water.
I would have no problem with that at all.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion to amend and a second. Do you have anything to say, sir?
Dan Richer, Hill City. Could you also amend that to have the stormwater people come out and see all the money they've spent on repairing work? Has it actually worked? Thank you.
Okay, vote on the amendment. Is there anything else, sir? Go ahead.
Jim Dean, again, I'll be very quick. Just wanted to add to what the superintendent said. I'm there, I live it every day. The sawmill has been taking water for a day and a half, longer than what we have. The elevation is about four to six feet different from our road to where the sawmill takes water. The sawmill has been taking water for a good day and a half. We just started paling the flow this morning, about 7:00 this morning. The county put eight to 10 inches of gravel over the top last, when they gravled this spring, raised the elevation of the backwater that backs into my property and other people's property up the creek by about a foot. Therefore, coming up, going into where my well is, coming into my operation, a lot farther than it ever did before because we raised the elevation of the gravel over the top of the pipe without checking on, on anything. So, I guess, I just wanted to say that, you know, studying it is really a good thing, but I would like to see the commission say that we need to fix that road one way or the other, to let the superintendent know that we really don't want to just go look at it, we want to fix it. It's been that way for 25 years, too small of a pipe, basically. Yes, the sawmill's an issue, but the sawmill's been taking the water a lot better than, than we have. And with the higher level of gravel on the road actually even backed it up even farther. Now, who, you know, just backing that water up caused us a huge amount of problems. So I guess I would like, at least like to see the gravel be dropped down to the original levels so that we don't keep building a higher and higher, higher dam there. They were going to bring three loads in today and, and raise that up another four to six inches, creating a higher dam. That's all I have to say and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close this discussion on this and we're going to clarify what we have in the way of motions. We do have an amended, a motion to amend.
The motion to amend is to actively involve the Corps of Engineers?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a second for that. Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now the motion as amended. Any discussion on that?
I have one thing. Sorry, Chair, is Spring Creek running through all this area where it's flooding? People are building by the creek and they're flooding that are by the creek? Is that the issue?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, any further comments on the motion as amended? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're ready for item 14, and I would encourage our discussion to be citing the problem or the situation and whatever is brought forward from that, the solutions will not occur in this room. So, Mrs. Curtis, if you would come up, identify yourself and tell us your concern.
I am Mrs. Curtis, as present. I will soon be taking back my maiden name. I am Mary Curtis Jobgen. Like I said, I'm going to be getting a divorce. I have here a petition that I submitted to you to, for consideration, to repair these roads that is a part of the National Badlands National Park. All of these in green, this is the Sage Creek Road area. As you can see on the map, all of the green, the baseline, Awanka Township, down to the south where you go to Seneca on 44. Here we have Indian Creek Road. This is Hart Table, there's tables down there. Further to the east, we have, we have Sheep Mountain going to the south that goes to Pine Ridge. None of that's paved. We have off of 44 going towards Wall. I haven't been down this road since I was probably in high school. Runs from Seneca up over, it's now called Sage Creek, up, down, across, over to Wall, Sage Creek Road. This needs to be paved. Very dangerous, very beautiful, but dangerous. It is a part of the Badlands National Park. Also, the road that goes to the Jobgen Homestead, which was established in 1906 by my grandfather, Matt Jobgen, now belongs to Donald and Joyce Valmer Jobgen, his grandson. Donald Jobgen has been very ill. This road is, goes to their place, Sage Creek Road. It goes past Leonard Jobgen's place, which is my father. Donald Jobgen purchased Leonard Jobgen's place, his uncle. Sometime in the late 80s, the Badlands National Park took a portion of Leonard Jobgen's land to the south perimeter around to the east and to the north of the Jobgen Homestead. This is now Badlands National Park. It used to be Dead Horse Pass. We used to, I and my father and my siblings, go with my father, we would take cattle off of this Dead Horse Pass to, it's about a mile south of my parents' home, down to the National Grant's lands down below where my dad had a lease. Therefore, there is also a state highway. This is gra, all gravel. It goes down through an interior in Emily Township, up to the Kanata Basin, to interior and around the loop. Down here, the Kudruners live, there's also Witchers. Kudruners has been homesteaded there since almost as long as the Jobgens. As you can see from down from Wall, there's a Fairview Township down south, go through there, over to the Kanata Basin, that loop. I told my cousin Joyce Valmer Jobgen, I said, "My God, this is so bad, washboardy, rough, and when you go down through the breaks, it's a two-lane road, and a portion of it is an embankment where you go down to see the breaks. This should be fixed. All of these roads should be paved. It is a state park, they are in a state park. Where that portion is, where you can go down off over the breaks, there should be guardrails there, there should be signs posted, caution. When I was going across, after leaving my cousin's place, Donald Jobgen's place, I visit him, he's very ill, and his wife, I went across there and, my God, I thought, boy, somebody could get killed, these roads are so bad. I'll be damned if the next day on, I went on to Friday, the next day, on Saturday afternoon, a man from Oklahoma was not killed down in one of them sections. This needs to be fixed, all of these highways from, also the bombing range, down to Sheep Mountain, goes to Rocky Ford, Porcupine and Pine Ridge. That should be fixed. I'm just stating my case. I filed a petition with you for consideration to be voted upon, to be, a petition to be circulated, since I'm to repair all of these roads, because it's a damn shame if, because if somebody's greed, that some section is paved and some anchor's afraid they're going to lose some damn business, but jeopardize somebody's life. When it's a state park, Badlands National Park, I have a petition here. You can see, name, address, signature, sign, Maryam Jobgen, Curtis soon to be Jobgen. My person that I'm going to have back me, I don't think she could make it today because her husband is very ill, is Joyce Valmer Jobgen. I submit to you this.
We should give that to Holly, please.
I want it considered for circulation, please.
Thank you. Okay, next item is item 15, Central State Fair Update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Ron Jeffries, General Manager of Central States Fair. Been about 60 days since we've closed our books on the Black Hills Stock Show and I wanted to give you a report about the Black Hills Stock Show. Although the county does not subsidize the operations for the stock show, the county does help us improve the fairgrounds properties, which are vital to the stock show operation. We had a very good year at the stock show this year. Cattle prices were up almost a million dollars overall, which was a huge number for us. It's the first time that we actually broke a million dollars in the horse sale, another big milestone for the horse sale. Just really good livestock prices really drove that, plus excellent winter, weather for a big portion of the show was a big part of it as well. Our ticketed events did extremely well this year. One of the few times, you know, everybody thinks you put on a concert to make a lot of money and you rarely make money in concerts, but we were able to actually host a concert and made money from ticket sales alone in addition to concessions this year at the stock show. Ranch rodeo, sheepdog trials, both made more money than made in the past. Overall, net bottom line is the Central State Fair netted about $100,000 more than we did the previous year. How that impacts the fairgrounds is, we use our net profits at the end of our fiscal year, which will be September 30th, to make our improvements in grounds or equipment. Of course, obviously, you own the, the fairgrounds, but that's how we use our, our profits. And so we're, we're very excited to have had such a good year. We've been focusing right now, putting a lot of time and effort and labor into improving the horse barns. And the reason we do that is it's such a vital part, not only to the stock show, but to our year-round activities. We're very busy at the fairgrounds. Our first open weekend in 2015 is December 17th. So we're busy every single weekend. So we're busy every single weekend until December seventeenth. In addition to the, to that, I wanted to mention that the Black Hills Barbecue Festival, our fifth annual, is coming up next weekend, June twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. It should be a good family fun time. We've got Thomas Carnival Shows that'll be there. We've got barbecue. We've got bands. We've got live art taking place, where we'll have a muralist out painting the side of one of our semi-trailers for an advertisement. We've got a five K run, a run for the ribs that we'll be doing this year. I mentioned bands, but I've got to tell you, there's tons of really great Black Hills bands, from Randy McAllister, Bob Fahey, and James Van Nys, Thirsty Fish, Groove Project, Walt Keys, and Unfinished Business, Brandon Sprague. DeeDee and the Pharaohs will be here, our Councilwoman DeeDee and the Pharaohs, Darla Drew will be here, as well as the suspects, among others. We're also doing a South Dakota Beer Tasting Festival on Saturday, the thirteenth of June. That'll be a part with the Fun Run. You can stop at the end. Everybody that enters the Fun Run gets a plate of ribs at the conclusion. And of course, on the Sunday, the fourteenth, we have the amateur barbecue competitions and Bloody Mary contests. The last thing I have for a note for you is that it's the seventieth anniversary of the Central States Fair this year, August fourteenth through the twenty-third. We'll be moving forward with improvements and plans for a great deal. Nancy wanted me to come and blow all our steam today and tell you all about it, but I'm actually going to save that for the next meeting when we have, when we can announce our full concert lineup, et cetera. But we're excited about the direction for the, for the fair this year. We've got some big plans for the seventh anniversary, and I'd gladly answer any questions.
Any questions for Ron?
So you don't want to see what the...
Not yet.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you what the theme is. Our theme for the, for the fair this year, seventieth anniversary. And, and when you go to the fairs everywhere, you always have food on a stick. So we are, we are calling this year's fair Seventy Years of Food on a Stick. You can, we'll be having some Facebook contests where you can show us whatever food you have from wherever you eat on a stick for a chance to win great tickets and prizes and carnival promotions, on Facebook promotions. But it is the seventieth anniversary. We're very excited. The rains have really done a great job for the grounds. You know, we're not sprinkled in every area on the fairgrounds, obviously, so the rains have really been a blessing to the fairgrounds property themselves, for the grass and the trees, et cetera. I still, I still have invites, Commissioner Farby, to do our tour. I know that you haven't had a chance to tour, so when you're ready, we're, we're ready for you.
All right.
And I'll send an invite over with a full schedule for the barbecue festival for all of you as well. So, look forward to seeing you next week.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next item is item sixteen, A, B, and C.
Good morning.
Morning.
Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. The first thing on my agenda items is an annexation to Loveland Canyon Road District. That was, a special meeting, an election was held, and the question of annexation did result in a majority vote in favor of annexation. The board needs to acknowledge that in the minutes for taxation purposes for 2015, tax year and after. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is the annual renewal time for malt beverage licenses. You have one, two, three, four different letters that we have for you. If you want to handle them in one motion, that is fine. All the information as applied on the application is attached, as well as they are reviewed by the Sheriff's Office and Planning. And I believe you have those reports.
Chair, just a question for Ms. Julie. Maybe she doesn't. So on the renewals, do you look and see if there's any problems that any of them have had in the past or in the future, and then stop any of these? Or is that the Sheriff's Department's job?
We send the list to the Sheriff's Department and Planning in case there are any issues. If there are, they notice back to the board.
So it would have been on here?
If, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
I don't usually see their reports.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Julie.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the annual malt beverage license renewals?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Item C is a new retail on-off sale malt beverage for the Depot Restaurant and the High Country Guest Ranch. Appropriate documentation and application is attached. Fees, of course, have all been paid, and it would have gone over to the Sheriff's Office and Planning for comments.
Move approval of the licenses, applications.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item seventeen.
Good morning. Danny Gordon, Pennington County Fire. First item on the agenda there is a public display of fireworks for July third, Black Hills Speedway. Once again, they're planning on doing a public fireworks display. Bill Keister apologizes for not being able to be here today. He has some family health issues going on in his family, and so he apologized.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item is a joint powers agreement between Pennington County and the South Dakota Department of Ag, the Division of Wildland Fire. This has kind of been an ongoing thing. It's taken us kind of a couple of years to get it wrapped up through a couple of different attorney changes. All it does is allow, if Pennington County, I guess, uses some resources on a state wildfire, whether it's small or large, just simply allows the county to build the state wildland so we can get reimbursed for those costs. There's no cost, no obligation on either side, so. And Jay's been working with it for a month or two, and so, request approval.
Move approval of the joint powers agreement between South Dakota Department of Ag, Division of Wildland Fire.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Just, do we want to add to that, that we authorized the chair's signature on the originals?
Yes, ma'am. That would be fine. Yes, Commissioner.
Do you get that, Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further comments or questions?
Oh, Mr. Chair, why isn't this a contract as opposed to a joint powers agreement?
You what?
Why isn't this a contract as opposed to a joint powers agreement? What, what powers are we sharing?
Jay, do you have any comment?
I will defer that to the attorney. Simply said, when you deal with the state on issues like this, they pretty much demand they be in the form of joint powers agreements. Doesn't change anything. But there are times where we've agreed, I guess I would say I would agree with you, Commissioner Farby, that a contract could handle it. But some of the distinctions between contracts and joint powers get muddled enough that sometimes I think the state feels that it's just safer to have it in a joint powers agreement, and it's not overly offensive. Sometimes I think it just takes more than it needs to be, but here we are. We have an agreement. It appears to work. It's been in this format for a long time, and, and so I certainly have no objection to it.
Well, Mr. Chair, my recollection is right. Just in the last several meetings, we've approved a contract with, our Weed and Pest individual, or our department, with the state. And I believe, I believe the Highway Superintendent has had a contract with us, with the state. But certainly the Weed and Pest has, and, and I have another question.
Weed and Pest, I think, was also a joint powers agreement, if I remember right.
Oh, I could stand corrected, but I thought it was a contract. And the other part, the county agrees to include county personnel and equipment. What personnel and equipment are we providing, other than through our individual fire departments?
If I may, this, this could include the county highway department if they'd use a road grader dump trucks, sheriff's office if they had deputies assigned for security or purposes, evacuations due to a fire, any other county resources that we might happen to use.
Well, where I'm going with this is, is this a commitment to the voluntary fire departments, fire districts, excuse me? And, and if it's, if it's so, then their boards ought to be approving this or having a sign off on this deal.
No, this, this doesn't involve any of the volunteer fire departments. This is strictly between Pennington County and the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item eighteen. Yeah, I think we have a circumstance here relative to Pace Law that, are you prepared to comment on that, Danny?
Well, good morning again. I had just sent you a quick memo, sort of on an update on where we're at with Mr. Van Norman and the other representatives from Pace Law, also Craig Comer, Fire Chief, Sarah Booth, from the Hill City Ambulance, Dave Cromes from Rochford, Fire Chief, is out of town this week. But I kind of think the memo probably speaks for itself fairly well. There's a number of issues. It's not black and white. It gets fairly clouded when you start talking all the various issues and entities that are actually involved in this, at least from a fire and EMS standpoint. It includes the Rapid City Fire Department.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I make some further comments?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that I heard at the meeting was that Rochford is a very small fire department, and quite often, if they can't muster trucks and, and something to respond, it goes to Hill City, or it may go, there may be a call to Lawrence County, to some other emergency response or fire department. And as we looked at this, it became apparent that there, right now, we're not really sure how this all would work, but we think it's worth the time to bring together the Forest Service, the State Wildland, these different fire departments and emergency response units, so that we can have a good idea of what would happen if this should change to trust. We, we need to know, we need to first discuss how we handle it now, and then we need to figure out if how we handle it now will work. Because if this becomes trust land, then there's some different ways that the Forest Service works with the BIA, and there's some different changes. And we are not aware of that, how that really works. And so it would be my suggestion that we get a group of these folks together from those different agencies, and we really understand what happens now and what we need to have happen should these changes occur, and make sure our protocols are, are correct, that we're wanting to propose. And so I guess for our, our action as a county commission, I, I just would like to see a support for exploring this agreement, so that it is more clear, and it protects the safety of the folks that are going to be involved in, in the area if it should be a change in, from, from private property to a trust. And I, is there anything else you want to add? Did I forget something?
Well, it's just, but you're absolutely right, Commissioner. What looks like it's on the surface is a fairly simple thing, turns out not to be so simple. And part of that is, is if this does move into trust land, if you're talking, I'll say Pine Ridge or Rosebud Reservations and stuff, they provide all their own services. Then they rely on the, we'll call them the outside locals, maybe the interior, fire department, to supplement or help them. This is a little different up here. They don't have those primary services there, so the locals, Hill City, Rochford, whoever, provide those, they're the primary. And so it's kind of a one-eighty role reversal. And not that we, it can't be done. That's not the issue. It's just we need to make sure we do it right, so that there's no question about it, and when something does happen, or whatever, that, quite honestly, the costs are reimbursed, that everybody knows that Pace Law has no problem with the locals responding there and managing that situation until it can be resolved properly. I mean, and sometimes those are simple things, and sometimes they can get quite complicated.
Just in reference to this situation, in our last communique to the Department of Interior, the twenty-first of April, any support Pennington County would be willing to give the applicant would depend upon the existence of mutually acceptable agreements addressing the issues referenced above, and that's the thing we're talking about. Because of these problems of working out the details, we asked at that time for a sixty-day extension before we could, could and would commit to our position relative to going into trust status. And I think if I'm hearing you correctly, we have some more details to work out.
That would be correct.
And in that regard, then, sixty days, I, I don't know if we've been granted the sixty days, and I don't see how they hear it at the moment, but...
My recollection, Mr. Chairman, is we were, we were granted the sixty days, and I think it's up to July sixth is the date that's in my mind, is the deadline for the comments. So it may well, we may well have to seek another extension if, as somewhat convoluted or involved as this might be in trying to get BIA and Forest Service and all the different departments and agencies that are relevant to this issue together. Could, it could take a little while, and could take beyond July sixth, so we'll have to watch that deadline closely and maybe ask for another extension. Which, as I understand, Mr. Van Norman has always made it clear, if that's what it takes to do it and do it right, they, they will certainly support that. And Mr. LaPointe, that was here, who has that power to make that, I think fairly well indicated to us that last time that he supports that way of looking at it. If you need more time legitimately, let's, let's look at more time, so.
So today, we would, what, defer these two items?
I'm, I'm not real sure. I mean, no, just wait.
If...
Mr. Chair, these are two separate issues. The one issue is our support or non-support for trust status. The other issue is the agreements that we went ahead a couple meetings ago with law enforcement and highway. There's two remaining agreements. For somebody in Pennington County, whether it's Hill City or Rochford, or a combination thereof, agreements on ambulance and fire. The issue eighteen A is fire and emergency response agreements. Now, as far as I'm concerned, and I, and I'm sure that our fire chief, Hill City Fire District Chief and ambulance co-chair will correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, you folks, there's nothing changed from, from yesterday or the day before. Everything goes on until trust status changes, if ever, okay? So the agreements that are being worked on are related, but, but not necessarily critical to how we vote on supporting trust status. Trust status is a separate issue. It's connected, but a separate issue. Eighteen A is talking about fire emergency response agreements, and I guess it's, we can... 18A is talking about fire emergency response agreements and I guess we can continue working on those with, with the tribes. Correct?
If I may respond, I guess my understanding all along is the, how the commission desires to comment on the trust status depends on the existence or non-existence of the various contracts that are relevant to Paseau going into trust status. And those include the highway contracts, the law enforcement, fire and ambulance. Two of them are out of the way and out of our hands. They're now with the Paseau representatives and they're taking those around, as you recall, to the various entities, the different tribal groups to look at and determine whether they like the contract and so forth. So we've got that piece of it done. This is a piece that has not yet been done, right? So I guess the question is if, if it doesn't matter to you if there's a fire or ambulance agreement in place, you're already ready to comment, then you could do that. My understanding has always been you'd like to see, if there's going to be contracts, let's see them, get them in place, and that could have an impact on how you ultimately comment, which was in the letter as I understand, as Commissioner Peterson just read. So in that regard, I, I think they're very relevant.
And Mr. Chair, if you recall, when, when we voted, I voted against, after the sheriff got up and spoke very eloquently and very forcefully and very emphatically about we shouldn't proceed with those agreements, we shouldn't have. We did that. But once again, our support, at least from my position, I'm, I'm not going to support a, a resolution in support or non-support of trust status contingent upon agreements. We played our hand on agreements. We gave them something to go to bargain with when we signed those agreements. So why should we press on with a fire and ambulance? Anyway, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? And again, I have the question, do we officially defer this or not?
My motion, we continue this discussion indefinitely.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion died for lack of a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion that the commission support the continuation of, of the pursuit of a fire and emergency response agreement with Paseau.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item nineteen, Rural Library Services.
We got eighteen trouble, sir.
What?
What about eighteen B?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming this came from you, Holly?
Yes, this came from me, just to put it on the agenda so you guys knew that that deadline was coming up and if you wanted to form some comments, I could get the letter prepared, one direction or the other, to get presented to you guys by the next meeting because that's the only thing we have until that deadline. If you guys want to make a motion today to send another letter requesting another extension, we should do that today so we can move forward working on those other agreements. But you, you guys have the choice. You can not do anything today and work up against that deadline, but you've only got one more meeting.
If we, if we wait until next meeting to ask for another extension, is that a problem?
I don't believe so. I, I wouldn't want to risk them saying, no, you don't get another one and then we don't have any time to do anything with. I, I can't imagine that would have happened. Mr. LaPointe's been very supportive of giving us the time we need to work through this. I just like to plan three and four meetings ahead, so I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Mr. Chair, could we ask the, ask our sheriff to comment?
About the...
Continuing, getting a continuation of our deadline for commenting. Once again, we are being asked to comment on trust status. On, do, do we support or not support the tribe's application for trust status?
I think...
That's the issue before us. Pardon me?
I say, I think that's understood, yes.
And, and I guess I'd like our, our county sheriff's input.
We've had that in the past and when we are in a position to formalize our, our position on trust or not trust, his comments certainly would be welcome. But at this point, we aren't even close to bringing together our thoughts as a commission.
Chair, what was our motion when they came? I'm confused. I knew we, we voted on a couple of the comments from the sheriff and others, but Holly, what was our motion that day? I thought it was on trust status.
It was. It was to basically not be in support of it until these other agreements were in place. If we couldn't get this other stuff put together, we wouldn't be supportive of the land going into trust. This board has tied those two issues together as my understanding is how we've been working towards this the last six, eight months.
For some reason, I thought we were in support of the trust and then we were going ahead with some of those agreements and adding more, but I...
No, that's not my understanding of what that letter said. That was based on Commissioner Buschard's amendment to that initial letter was that we wouldn't be until these other agreements were in place.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Do you want some kind of motion or to, to continue this till next meeting?
I think we didn't.
To decide whether or not we're going to ask for extension or...
I, my recommendation to the board was to be a make a motion today to go for an extension. So we have the time necessary to get these done the right way.
Okay. So the first motion would be irrelevant?
No.
No.
No, you're still going to move forward in support of working towards these agreements. We're just up against the deadline on commenting for the land to go into trust.
But we didn't make a date for July 6th on those, those first motion?
No, but that's a separate deadline that's been set by BIA.
Okay.
So if we ask for another 60 days, that would put us into September? What do you think?
I guess Jay Alderman with the State Attorney's Office, just to cut right to the chase, the practical of it is in two weeks, which would be your last time to comment before the July 6th, probably not going to have an agreement because we're kind, we're kind of starting from scratch from a little bit what I've heard today and it'd be hard to pull all of these different agencies together. We may not be able to get them all in the same room in the next two weeks. You just never know, even being diligent and in good faith trying to do that. So the truth of the matter is, two weeks from now, you're, you're, you're not going to be in a position to comment if you're, you're hoping to have those agreements in front of you to see if you're satisfied with them or not. So Holly's suggestion, I think, is very relevant, practical. I think Danny is suggesting at least a 30-day extension request. I'll make an assumption that it's currently July 6th and if you push that 30 days to August 6th, that might give us enough time to certainly sit down and maybe come up with some, some drafts or some pretty solid wording with, with all the parties.
Mr. Chair.
Not less than 30 days.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make one comment. We have a big rally coming and getting people together and getting them to think about this, I, I think 30 days could be difficult. I, I would rather see 60 days.
I agree.
Well, in, in our last time that we asked for 60, the, the comment was, it'd be great if it was less than 60, but at least you have the room to work with. So I think everybody will work towards not having to use the full 60 is what I'm saying. But if it's there, then you, you have a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that the Board of Commissioners request another extension for decision on the Paseau trust for another 60 days.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Okay, Rural Libraries. Item nineteen.
Nancy, Jess is going to run that from this room. So if you just want to say next, she'll go to the next slide.
Next? Okay. She can hear me then?
She can hear you in there.
Okay. Well, first of all, I, I just want to review with the public what the Board of Commissioners has done in relation to, just going through some of the public library services funding issues. We had meetings with the Rapid City area, the Hill City area and the Wall area, three Mondays in a row this last month. And I really want to say thank you to the people who came. We had good turnouts. We had a lot of good questions and suggestions and I, I really felt that it was worth it for the commissioners to hear that. We also really promoted the questionnaire that we have on library services, which is, is on the website for the Pennington County. We've gotten some good response there too and, and we as commissioners have just been getting that, so I think that we will in the next couple of weeks be going through that. One of the things that I want to tell everyone is that the meetings were recorded. Anyone can look at them. We'd be happy to give that information to you. So contact Holly.
They are on our webpage on YouTube.
Oh, they're on YouTube? Okay, they're on YouTube, so that makes it easy. Okay, so let's go to the, the first one. This is the meeting here in Rapid City. There were 14 people in attendance. We had a lot of comments and I'm not going to read all of these comments, but you know, there's a great deal of concern about increasing taxes. There's also concern about making sure that, that our, our libraries are continued. I mean, there was a real strong support for the libraries, just a lot of concern about how we would finance them. And that was a theme throughout the whole, the whole, all three meetings. So I, I guess this is, you can look through this, we'll let you look at it a little bit. I, I hate to just read all that to you. Summary is, you know, we've got to stay within the budget. We want the libraries to, we want to continue to have the library service. We don't want to raise taxes. Kind of a, not an easy decision for the commission to make. The next one was in Hill City and we had 16 people there. The room was pretty full, really good, good conversation about it. Again, folks really are very interested in preserving the libraries. They want to do that, but they want to figure out how to do that without, without going ahead and, and increasing taxes. So it was a common, common theme. There were some concerns. They, they say we need to run it like a business. One of the things that I think is confusing to people is that we as a commission do not tell people how to run their libraries and that, we don't micromanage those libraries. So when we make a contract with the library to provide funding for them, that library decides how that money is spent. And I, I think that came through quite a bit in Hill City. There was, I think they thought we as, as a county run those libraries and we don't. In the Wall, there were 17 people in attendance and there were some questions about how it was taxed. Could it be just on homes and not on ag land? Of course, Wall has several landowners down there that were, they have large parcels of land and, and their tax is pretty high. The, last year, 2014 paying 2015, it, it was for libraries $21.50 per $100,000 of assessed value. So when you look at those large ranchers, they pay quite a bit. And that, that came through loud and clear in Wall. We tried to make sure that the people who paid the taxes had their first, they were first ones to make the comments, but it was open to everyone in, in the meetings. There was concern in Wall that maybe cities could do more for, for financing the libraries. There was one suggestion, can some of this, the services go out for bid? You know, there were just a lot of different ideas from down there and I thought they were great. There's something that we need to look at. But in summary, what we really ended up with is no new, no more new taxes. Library services, services should be paid for by the users. And to expand on that a little bit, you know, if, if, if you use the library, then, then you should be the one that pays for it. The problem with that is that the public has voted in 1998 that the county should provide those services. So that would be a whole different discussion of, of having the public say, we no longer want the county to provide those services. Another point was that we need to renegotiate contracts. We need to reduce expenses. The locations of where those libraries are matter and that libraries are needed in our communities. And you can see from, from this that, you know, this is a really difficult decision for the Board of Commissioners and, and that's why we started this, just to reiterate, that's why we started this now, because we know that we're going to have to change how some of the funding is dispersed. I think as we go forward, I'd like to open it to the commission and see if there is another step that we should take. We are approaching budgeting time. Is there something that the commission would like to see us do to go further, to get more information, to whatever you think you might like? I think it's important that we see what the commissioners are interested in doing.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have, do have a question. And I wasn't at any of these meetings for various reasons, but Survey Monkey, hopefully that's not what it sounds like. What is that?
It's just an online survey tool that you could use for people to go in and answer questions and it's...
Well, that's what I thought.
Compiles data.
And, and you, one of your things up there was no new taxes. On the other hand, the Survey Monkey says, would you, as a Pennington County taxpayer, support an additional opt-out increase in taxes to continue to provide public library services at the current level? 60% said yeah.
I know.
So how do you justify putting that up there?
Full disclosure, what you saw on the PowerPoint was only the notes that we heard from the public meetings.
Okay.
The Survey Monkey results, we just closed that out on Friday because we wanted to open it as long as we could. So we haven't gone through the Survey Monkey results and presented that to the board yet.
Is that, it, it, do you wish the county to reduce public library services?
Feed that one.
No, 80%. So I, I, and, and of course, when you get 56 people, not exactly a majority of people in this county.
Correct, and that, we could certainly do that as a next step is to... Correct, and that, we could certainly do that as a next step, is to, to also publish. We've published the Survey Monkey results, I just didn't put them in the PowerPoint, because it's two different things.
I understand, I, I just, but you, I guess, your, the comments that were up here were from the public meetings.
From the public meetings, yes, sir.
That, that explains it.
Well, it also says, "Do you wish for county to reduce public library services, thus reducing taxes?" Yes, forty-five, and no, or what is it? Yes, nineteen point six-four percent, no, eighty point thirty-six percent. So, it's kinda contradicting itself a bit.
It, it truly is, Deb, and, um,
I'll know where to worry.
That's why I'm saying it's a difficult thing for us. And, and, um, and I, if there are other questions that we need to pursue answers for, I think as a Commission, we should figure that out. You know, one of the things that, um, and I, does she have the map that she can put up there?
I think so.
One of the questions that we heard was, with annexations, how does that affect the number of people that were not within Rapid City Public, or Rapid City Municipal, um, borders as opposed to what it is now? And, and this map that we, uh, we got from our, um, I just lost the name of the,
G I S.
G I S. This is what we, what has happened since nineteen ninety-eight. The darker yellow colors are annexations. Those are people that are now a part of the, um, municipal boundaries of Rapid City. It's, you know, over six thousand that are now, uh, residents. Uh, and, and that was a question we heard a couple of times. So we, we did provide that map. You know, we've had a lot of construction around the city, whether it's within or without city limits. But this is just within city limits. So that, I don't know if that's any useful information, but what I can say is that we could try to get other maps to see if that would help the Commission with some ideas or, or so on.
Commissioner Troutman, I appreciate all the work you and Holly have put into this. Did a great job. I think the next steps is to meet maybe with, uh, this Commission, with WDT, and have some good conversation with School Board, and then meet with the Rapid City Public Library. So they can answer some of these questions and the Commission questions. So we get full disclosure on, I guess, for me to move forward, um, to see what we wanna do in the fut- future. I don't know about the Commission, but for me, it'd be helpful to see, um, what their thoughts are, now that we know what the public is.
So, so are you thinking, um, like, give, um, give them informa- the information, and then just have them come back with some response to the, the concerns? Or what are you thinking?
I'm pretty sure at this point, they probably have, do they have these responses?
They may not have the,
Yeah. Okay. So they would probably look before they met us, too. Just to have a meeting on those responses. Any questions that some of us that are new have, and then maybe some of the answers that we feel, um, would be beneficial for our decision for the future.
Okay.
Does that make sense? How we do that, um, that'd be up to the Commission, but I think it would be beneficial.
Any other comments, or?
I, I would comment, uh, this way. I am not familiar with the library contracts in detail. However, I do have questions, and one of them is, I do not know or understand the reason that services were discontinued at WDT by Rapid City Library. That, um, probably my perception is that that stimulated a lot of this, uh, ex- exploring of services and delivery and that sort of thing. And in that respect, I, I think it's incumbent that we talk with WDT, understand what they can and will deliver, and also talk to Rapid City Library and see what they can and will deliver. And I think it, uh, it's important that the contract with Rapid City Library, which, as I understand it, was a continuing contract, not be a continuing contract, that it be subject to examination, same as the rest of them. Now, that's my opinion. Now, whether or not that's valid in moving forward or not, that's up to you to decide. And ma'am, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'm Jessica Olson. I, I spoke last time, I'm the Vice Chair for the Library Board in Rapid City. And I just wanted to say, we're more than welcome to sit down and talk with you, and we think that face-to-face dialogue would be helpful, because we can explain the reasoning be- behind the WDT discontinuation of that contract. We can explain the contracts that were set for the funding for the local library and options to move forward. I think, uh, one thing I wanted to clarify, there was an article that came out, um, and I believe it quoted Ms. Troutman as saying that the Rapid City Library was in favor of increasing taxes. What we're in favor of is supporting the public in their decision. As Rod said last time, if we wanna take this to a vote, we're more than open to that. We're also open to renegotiating. So I think we're open to sitting down and talking that through. But I just wanted to clarify that that is not our express opinion, and no one from the paper contacted us. So, um, do you have any questions right now that you'd like me to answer? Or, or do you wanna wait to set up a time?
Think we will wait.
Okay. Do you, could you let us know when you would like to set up a time? Because I, I do feel like sometimes that, that has not been the easiest thing. And I, and I think more Board members would like to be involved in that discussion.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, uh,
So, if, I, I just wanna, um, summarize what I'm hearing. We, um, we, we wanna meet with Rapid City Public Library and WDT. For the Rapid City Public Library, we wanna understand why services were discontinued. We want to understand what R C P L can and will deliver in services. And we want to talk about changes in the contract. We wanna also talk to WDT to understand what it can and will deliver in services. So, i- i- is that a good summary, do you think? Okay. So what I would think we would want to do is, is write a letter of invitation to both entities and try to set up a, uh, some, um, meetings in the next month or so. Okay? Is that, does that make sense to everyone, or? Okay, great.
The Board want to address at all budget hearings in this? Or we just want to kinda set the libraries separate from the other subsidies during budget hearings?
Not familiar with your budget hearing.
I, I would think with some of the details that we're looking at, that it, setting them separate would be productive.
Okay.
That's my opinion, but. Any other comments? If not, are we ready to move on?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Nancy and Holly.
Okay, item twenty. This is a request for refund of penalty fees.
I don't know how to do that, but you're welcome to say it. Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Tiddy. My wife and I own a small cabin up in Pactola Estates. And, uh, we recently applied for a building permit to build a garage, and, uh, that was done last month. In the process of doing that, we were not sure about the property line locations. So I went out and had the property surveyed, and in that, we were surprised to see that the property line itself was a considerable distance from where, where the road ditch was. So from there, we prepared, uh, thank you, there's some pictures of it. From there, we prepared, uh, the measurements, and took those measurements and, uh, set up and had a draftsman put that all together, and I submitted that to the Planning and Zoning Commission for my permit. In the process, uh, about a week later, I was advised I cannot get the, the permit until I handled some violations that I was told there was, uh, that part of the deck right there, a small corner of it, was in the setback area, along with a portable shed. And in visiting with them, they also said I had to pay an eight-hundred-dollar penalty fee. So, you know, a little bit later, I guess you'll hear my variance request, um, which will be discussed. But, uh, my request today is a refund of that penalty fee. I did not build any structures within that setback area. That was, this was all done prior to when we purchased it, and, uh, that's my request today.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tiddy?
Uh, I have not a question, but the issue here is, um, we deal in Pennington County, since I've been here, with people that had properties before others with variances and forgot to get building permits and different stuff like that. And then whoever gets that property later ends up paying those fees. So we would be setting a precedent on yours, just like most everybody else's.
I understand that, uh, Commissioner. In this case, I didn't, there's no structures that are solid structures that are built. As you can see, it's just a portable shed and, uh, and just a small portion of a, a deck. There was no structure that was built, solid structure that was built on that. And that's where I'm saying the assessment of the penalty, I don't think is, uh, appropriate at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tiddy.
Thank you.
E J, do you have any information, um, on what the fees, are they separated from the deck and the, um, shed? Or are they just?
The double the permit fee is three hundred with a five-hundred-dollar additional fine on top. That's the eight hundred that he's talking about.
Okay, so the three hundred,
Overall, he paid eleven seventy.
So the three hundred was for what?
That's the double, the fine for the permit. So it's three hundred to begin with, so there's, double's gonna be another three hundred.
That's six, and then the shed is five hundred?
No, that's an additional, is an additional five hundred penalty per ordinance for, uh, variance.
The shed?
Yep. So he's still, he's not asking for the other three seventy back, just asking for the eight hundred. Overall, it was eleven seventy.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Are the boundary lines established now within an inch or two of where they really are, where they're supposed to be? Is it, is the survey, is the exact as you're gonna get it?
It's as exact as I, as I, I got it there, right, that's correct. It lays out the exact boundary lines where they're at. The road actually curves away from my property, but the boundary lines continues on into my property. So, uh, when the Association built, they must've just plowed the road and kinda curved away from that. So, uh, in answer to your question, yes, it is an exact location.
And that wasn't one of those, and I forget the exact words, that, uh, that the surveyor gallant put on us here a, a couple of meetings ago, but it was not one of those, oh, I forget the exact words. Well, it wasn't a preliminary survey, it was a actual, actual fe- survey.
This was an actual survey, paid, paid for it. Seven hundred and fifty dollars just to have that property line in the front of my property laid out.
Well, as I recall, Mrs., uh, Fink said that it's a lot more than seven hundred and fifty bucks if you're gonna do a precise survey, but.
Well, that would be for the whole property line. I just want it in front where the road went, sir.
And any idea of, uh, back when those buildings were built, any idea at all from any history as to where the bound, where they thought the boundary lines were when those buildings were put in there?
I do not know that, no, sir.
Yeah. I move approval.
Is there a second? I'll second it. One of the questions I have is, and, uh, may not be able to answer it, but, but, uh, what Commissioner Farabee is talking about in terms of the previous, least assumed property lines in relation to the setback violations? If, if the deck corner was legal under the old property lines and became illegal once the new survey occurred, is there any way to determine that?
We're looking at, I just asked Cassie if she has the original building permit. The way it works now, when somebody comes up, they come up to the office with their site plan, their plot, their plot plan. They tell us, in good faith, how far away from the lot lines they're going to do it. So, with the information that I have in the report, it's unclear whether they intended to do it correctly or not.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna vote no, but I'm not gonna waste my time in explaining it, 'cause I know where this is going.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. Do you want a roll call vote?
Bus crew?
No.
Farabee?
Yes.
Adcock?
No.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion failed.
Thank you for consideration.
Okay. We need another motion relative to Board of Adjustment.
Motion would be to deny.
Make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Be me.
Now you can make your motion.
Sorry. Deny, just kidding. Nobody's in there today.
Item A.
Sorry, Cassie.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, um, to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from twenty-five feet to twenty-one feet for an existing garage, and from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet for an existing shed. The applicants are Monty and Nicole Albert. The existing land use of this property is residential. Staff is recommending that, um, variance fifteen fifteen be continued to the July seventh Board of Commissioners meeting so that the applicant can have the property surveyed. There is a question on exactly what one of those, um, setbacks is, so we may need an amendment to this. So we are recommending continuance with the applicant's concurrence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is variance request fifteen sixteen, um, for Kevin and Rhonda Tiddy to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to nine feet to bring an existing shed and deck into compliance. This property is currently used as a residential property. As it exists today, um, it is block seven, block four of Pactola Estates subdivision. It is zoned limited agriculture district. It is one point zero-two acres. Access to this property is off of Pactola Court. Currently, the lot contains a single-family residence with attached garage and decks and a six-by-ten shed. Um, on May first, the applicant applied for a building permit to construct an eight-hundred-square-foot garage addition onto his existing residence, as he stated before. That is when we discovered the setback issues, so he has applied for this variance. Would you like me to read through the criteria for the variance request?
I think if you, uh, could comment as to whether or not the four criteria have been met. Identify the criteria.
Okay. The first criteria is the, um, specific circumstances such as exceptional nar- narrowness, topography, or sighting. As we know, um, the deck and shed are already there. The second consideration is, does this grant a use that would not be granted otherwise? The answer to that would be, um, no, this wouldn't exclude this property or make it any different. It would only allow a variance to the, um, front yard, required front yard setback, which is not in harmony with the zoning ordinance, but, um, so that would be the criteria that's not met. This is not completely in harmony with the zoning ordinance, as a twenty-five-foot setback is required.
I'll move approval of, I'll move approval of the variance for Kevin and Ron Tede.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yeah, it looks to me like to get down to nine feet is because of the existing movable shed. The deck isn't, is probably inside the 25 feet, but not bad.
Correct. The existing shed, we don't have an exact measurement, but it appears that it would probably be about 20 feet, so it only encroaches approximately five feet into the required setback. The shed is what is.
Is there a place to move it to on this lot?
There would be, and I have spoken with the applicant regarding that. He said he is willing to move the shed if necessary. It is movable.
I mean, it looks like it's on skids or something, so it looks like it's.
Any other discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, if this were zoned properly, it's 1.02 acres and it's limited ag. I thought limited ag was three to 10. Now, if it was zoned LDR like it should be, and you're beating, we talk about harmony and all this stuff. If it was in harmony with the intent of the zoning ordinance, it'd be LDR. What's the setback for LDR?
LDR is still 25 feet.
Same.
But SDR is eight feet. So, you know, we talk about all this harmony business, why isn't LDR, just like SDR, eight feet on the sides and five feet in the back? If you can find the back or front in lots like this. This thing is zoned one, like I say, it's zoned limited, or limited ag, 1.02 acres, get real. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Need a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustment.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda.
PJ Conover, Planning Department Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and voted the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C, second reading of major plan unit development amendment PU 1502 for Deerfield Park condominiums, and approval has been recommended. Item D, plan unit development review O204 for Deerfield Park condominiums, recommended to be continued to the July 7th, 2015 Board of Commission meeting. Item E, minor plat 1512 and subdivision regulation variance 1506 for Roland and Laura Willard, Davis Engineering as the agent, recommended be continued to the June 16th, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item F, rezone 1506 and comprehensive plan amendment 1506 for Roland and Laura Willard, Davis Engineering as the agent, recommended be continued to the June 16th Board of Commissioners meeting. Item G, minor plat 1510 for Gordon and Carmen Abernathy, Fisk Land Serving as the agent, and approval has been recommended. Item H, plan unit development review O607 for Rapid City MHP LLC for Simran Mobile Home Park, and recommended that it be continued to the July 7th Board of Commissioners meeting. Item I, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1502 and comprehensive plan amendment 1502 for Mitch Morris, recommended be continued to the June 16th, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
EJ, do we have to remove I or not on Mitch Morris's?
No, it's item K, I think the one you're thinking of.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Regular agenda, item J.
Hi again, Cassie Bolstead again. Item J is a minor plat request and a subdivision regulations variance request for Will, William and Nancy Ewing, Davis Engineering as the agent. The minor plat request, the applicants are essentially requesting to reconfigure a lot line between Lot A and B of Ewing Addition to create Lot AR and BR of Ewing Addition. As they exist currently, both of these lots are zoned suburban residential. Lot A is 1.33 acres, Lot B is 0.84 acres. Both of these properties are vacant of any structures at this time. Access to Lot A, which is this southern lot here, is off of Forest Road. Access to Lot B currently is via a 40-foot-wide private access easement through Lot A. Proposed lots would both be zoned suburban residential as well. Proposed Lot AR, which would be this western portion, or excuse me, eastern portion over here, would be 1.05 acres. Lot BR would be 1.12 acres. Again, both would be vacant of any structures at this time. Access to Lot AR would still be off of Forest Road. Access to Lot BR would still be taken via an access easement from a shared approach that has been approved off of Forest Road. There is a portion of both of these lots that would be within the 100-year floodplain, so a floodplain development permit would be required depending on where they built in this. A little bit of history on this one. September 2nd, 2014, the Board of Commissioners approved minor plat 1418 to create Lot A and B of Ewing Addition. And then on April 28th of this year, the applicant supplied for the current minor plat 1511 to reconfigure the existing lot lines. I have been told by the agent that this is because a neighbor would like to buy one of these chunks of property and wanted the lot line reconfigured, which is why they're coming back so soon reconfiguring a lot line. The minor plat was routed through the interdepartmental review process. No significant issues were raised during that. The subdivision regulations variance request, these are the same regulation variances that were requested with the plat in 2014. They are requesting to waive road improvements to Forest Road, including a 24-foot-wide paved driving surface with curbs and sidewalks. They're requesting to waive dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road, including a 66-foot-wide right-of-way. They're requesting to waive dedication of a 66-foot-wide access easement across proposed Lot AR that would provide access to proposed Lot BR. Waive road improvements for the access easement, including a 24-foot-wide paved driving surface with curbs and sidewalks, and to waive engineered road construction plans. When this was heard in 2014, a portion of the subdivision regulations variance was denied, and that portion that was denied was to waive the dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road and road improvements to the access easement. So, recommendation from staff for the subdivision regulations variance is to waive the requirement for road improvements to Forest Road, the dedication of a 66-foot-wide access easement, road improvements for the access easement, and engineered road construction plans. However, based on comments from county highway, staff does recommend denial of the portion of subdivision regulations variance 1505 to waive the dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road, including a 66-foot-wide right-of-way. And staff is recommending approval of minor plat 1511 with 12 conditions.
Any questions?
I have one. They're splitting these lots and they're in the floodplain. Is there going to be issue with water protection with being in the floodplain, putting more, having suburban residential in a floodplain area with water protection?
Brittany Malater, Water Protection Coordinator. I know when this was originally platted, the environmental planner went out there and she did find soils. There was actually halfway decent soils there for conventional septic systems. I know she did have some concern at that time when it was platted regarding that. We did have some concerns, but this plat isn't going to change, I guess, the original plat, so.
By adding one more property on an issue that might be having a water protection issue already?
Well, anytime you add two wastewater systems, there's always a increased potential of, I mean, you're going to increase it. When you go from nothing to two, there's always a, you're going to increase that potential.
Do they ever deny plats based on floodplain areas because of water protection? Have they ever?
Actually, there is one, and it was this Ewing in the past, and it was downstream of this site. That was probably what, two, three years ago? But it was the same applicant on a different site. But yes, that was concern was the floodplain and the wastewater treatment and the location of the system.
Just from being in the city and watching like Green Valley and different areas being floodplain areas or areas where, you know, they should be further back, they've had some major issues in the city with building in the floodplains and not having adequate or doing septics in those areas that are close to floodplain.
And to answer your other part of the question about development on these lots, they would have to get the floodplain development permit approved first by the certified floodplain manager out of highway, and that would have to be done by a surveyor. So, that's still, the build on there is still contingent on those numbers coming back correctly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I do have one more, sorry, just for Deb. They would still have to meet that setback from the creek, so the new systems would still have to meet that setback.
And who checks if they do the best management practices, meaning their stormwater and different things? Do you guys go back and check it?
That would be me, and I have been checking on sites regularly, so.
Thank you, Ms. B.
You're welcome.
Okay. What's your wish?
Move approval.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to clarify that this would be with 13 conditions. There was one added during planning commission last week, so I apologize, I said 12 conditions. It would actually be 13 conditions.
What?
So.
1511 with 13 conditions.
Yes, with 13 conditions on the plat.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item K.
Item K is rezone 1503 and comprehensive plan amendment 1503 to rezone 424.42 acres from general agriculture district to suburban residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the fruitsure land use from limited agriculture to suburban residential. And the applicant and the owner is Mitch Morris. Basically, on May 27th, staff spoke with Mr. Morris, and he had indicated that what his original submittal for this rezone, I'm sorry, yeah, for, for this application for the rezone comp plan was not, did not accurately reflect what his intentions were for the property, and he's asking that this rezone and comprehensive plan be ended or just denied, basically go away.
So, PJ, if he denies this and does a different zone, does he have to pay the fee again?
Yes.
Can we waive that fee? Meaning, can he just use the fee that he just paid for his new rezone?
Your choice if you'd like.
Okay. And his intention is to rezone it, a different than suburban residential?
Correct. The last time I spoke with him, and he is in the audience today, the last I spoke with him, it was, options seemed, appear to be low-density residential and possibly some plan unit development. I don't know if they would both go at the same time or if they go in phases.
So, it's.
But he's asking for the first one has to be ended or denied so he can apply for the second one, so we don't have two conflicting rezones in the same parcels.
My motion would be to end the last rezone and, and transfer the fees to the next zoning at no cost at that point, or the same cost as what he had, just transfer the fees.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion died for lack of a second. Any other comments or questions?
So, we're not, we're going to have him pay another fee for something he never did?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, I guess, deny item K.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, item L.
Good morning, Brittany Malater, Water Protection Coordinator. Item L is just a couple of quick updates. Back in November 2013, I gave a overview of a use attainability analysis that was done on Spring Creek, and actually, the commission wrote a letter to the DNR supporting their recommendation, so I just kind of wanted to let you know where that recommendation was or what had happened with it. I'll just get some background real quick. In June 2013, a use attainability analysis was performed on Spring Creek by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources due to a request from a concerned citizen regarding the immersion recreation beneficial use of Spring Creek. So, just some background probably for you, Deb, is beneficial use is how they determine what the standards are going to be on a creek. Immersion recreation, I guess, in so many words, is swimming. So, the department came out and used a lot of our water quality data through our project and, and did some study on their own. And during the, they did a report, and during their triennial review with the, their triennial review, they submitted these recommendations for the EPA, and the EPA did not support one of the, one of those recommendations, and that was to remove the immersion recreation beneficial use from the upper portion of Spring Creek, from Spring Creek Road West to the headwaters, and list its beneficial use as limited contact recreation, so it mean it would take, the standard would basically be increased, it would take more, the pollutant level would be higher essentially on that beneficial use. So, in so many terms, the beneficial use on the entire segment of Spring Creek from the headwaters to Sheridan Lake will remain immersion recreation. Number two is that in, in September 2014, the commission approved the Spring Creek Watershed and Project Implementation Plan for Segment 3 and submission of the plan to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
Mr. Chair, can we, can we comment on the first one before we go to the second one?
Go ahead.
Use attainability analysis, just for the rest of the board, the young lady from DNR that did the use of attainability analysis, let me back up a little bit, the EPA uses a rebuttable presumption, and, that's not my words, their words, that every, every water body in the United States is rebuttably assumed to be immersion recreation capable and supportable of, of aquatic life. And rebuttal presumption, and of course, maybe Commissioner Buscud will correct me, but basically, that means that if you don't agree to that presumption, you can rebut it. So, this young lady named Shannon McRae, Minorage, came out and, and looked at Spring Creek from roughly Rafter Jay up to the headwaters, and actual onsite study, and she recommended that we remove at least part of Spring Creek for immersion recreation. And, and I tried to talk to her a few days ago when I saw this report, and she wasn't available, but I did find out that EPA reviewer, to my surprise, wasn't the same guy that said that those pigs, the most detected livestock source, it was a different, different guy. And I still have, have a phone call into him to ask him when he was up here and when he looked at the creek and, and what he made his, based his decision upon. I don't know the entirety of that creek, but I don't think I'd, I'd swim in it. Up at the boy scout camp, a youngster I might have, but today I sure, heck, that wouldn't. This is just ludicrous, this whole concept is ludicrous. Swimming in Spring Creek above Rafter Jay up to the headwaters. You get 6,000 feet to water, it's awful cold. So, this guy, his name is George Parish, I left a call for him yesterday, he's not in, and he's the one that laid the words rebuttal presumption on me. Sound like a very, very intelligent guy, but I'd like to get him out and take a visit, actual visit of Spring Creek. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And then number two was on September 2nd, again, 2014, the Board of Commissioners approved the Spring Creek Watershed and Project Implementation Plan, Segment 3, and submission of the plan to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources for grant funding. On December 9th of 2014, the Nonpoint Source Task Force approved the plan as written, requesting $215,000 in 319 funds, and forwarded that on to the Board of Water and Natural Resources. On January 8th, 2015, the Board of Water and Natural Resources approved the full request of the $215,000 of funding. They actually did split out the funding, it'll be $115,003. It'll be a hundred and fifteen thousand in three nineteen funds and a hundred thousand in clean water state revolving fund, water quality funds.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Obviously, I think everybody knows how I feel about the hoax. Fraud is actually fraud. And, you know, we've spent so far, so far we've spent on Spring Creek, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents. What do we have to show? What do we have to show for that money? And those of you fellow commissioners that haven't looked at Spring Creek and the projects that have been done out there, and specifically the one that a guy named Lowry from Sioux Falls, has got a very, I won't say expensive, but a, but a quite nice summer home out here. He was in the middle of the project when the rain started. And I'll bet you, I'll bet you that mud in his area is worse now than it was when he started. We've spent money landscaping, and we've spent some money, like four or five thousand bucks for to water a couple of horses, and I think those horses are gone by the way now. We've approved some septics that should have been done under the Pennington County ordinance starting in two thousand eleven, when the ordinance was, or two thousand ten when the ordinance was approved. So what are we doing? What are we, why are we wasting taxpayer money? And, and I know Commissioner Busch has talked about, well, it's, it's all taxpayer money, but it's way, way away in Washington. Well, the two hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred thousand is right out of the pier. A hundred thousand right out of our pockets a little closer, and then really close to home. How much are we spending? How much are we spending right here in Pennington County for labor and whatnot? For what? What are we getting for our money? Thank you.
Anything else? There is a motion requested?
The next item. On the next item? Are we on item?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah. So item M is the Spring Creek watershed man, or, excuse me, watershed management and project implementation, Segment Three D E N R grant agreement. So the request of motion is that the Board of Commissioners approve the chairman's signature on the attached Spring Creek Watershed and Implementation Project Segment Three grant agreement and submits it to the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
Move approval.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
What, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I've.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, I wasn't looking at you. You walk so quietly.
This is good carpet you guys got. Dan Richer, Hill City. I would like someone from the county, stormwater management or emergency management or somebody to take a look at Spring Creek when the flows go down to see what has happened with these BMPs that we spent so much money on. Before we, before you continue on with approving any more projects. That's, that would be my request, that it, I mean, we have got unprecedented flows, so we have a perfect opportunity to see if these BMPs actually work or not. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There's, yeah, there's been, okay. I want to vote for this, but I, I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Richer, except we're not approving any projects with this. We are approving a grant to get the money. So we're, still have an opportunity to look at what projects will be coming up, so.
If I may respond, Mr. Chair.
You certainly may.
The, the board previous to my time took away the oversight, if you recall. Commissioner Busch took away the oversight, gave it to the planning director. Our only oversight is vouchers. Now, I don't think I'm brave enough. If I see a voucher come here for Mr. Lowry, for example, from Sioux Falls, twenty-some thousand bucks, once he's done the work and submitted the vouchers, I don't think I'm brave enough to disprove it.
You know, Mr. Farabee, I think you're absolutely correct, and I voted against turning it over to the planning and zoning director.
Thank you. And, and we should, that oversight, we can take that back.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
We did have a motion.
Yeah, we do have a motion in a second. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
Aye.
So noted. Okay. Item M.
Item M is just Vacation Home Rental Review Committee. We recently had one of the appointed committee members resign, moved out of state. And on May twenty-first, the three nineteen Vacation Home Rental Review Committee met and made a motion, basically a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that they would like the vacant position re-advertised for one additional person plus an alternate in case this situation comes up again.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-two.
Real briefly, and I guess I should correct this, agenda items. Holly and I were chatting about liability insurance and whatnot, bicycle races, and, and I think we, we jointly agreed we probably ought to have a policy that at least suggested that.
Would you mind waiting until the screen goes up?
Sorry about that.
So people can hear you.
Sorry.
It's kind of noisy.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
It's, it's my opinion, and of course, it's up to the rest of the board. I, I think we probably should have at commission level a policy on the use of the roads, the county highways, for bicycle races. And, and what other, pogo stick races or whatever kind of races other than, well, we can't race cars out there either, of course, but use of the county highway, roadways for any purpose other than intended purposes. And with your agreement, I'll draft up something and, and I'll ask the rest of you for input. Ask Holly and the rest of you for input, and, and maybe we can come up with a policy in the next couple of months.
Mr. Chair, would we get the sheriff's department involved in it and that sort of thing? Because it seems like that would be, they would have the experience of handling traffic and so on.
Absolutely. Part of the policy would include the sheriff and the highway, yes.
We not have a policy for the highway department and the sheriff to look at bike races and running events? And that would have to include adopt a highway because you have people on the side of the road. You would have to include anybody that's on the side of the, using that rightway for anything but road. So are you gonna put it that far, George? Is anybody that uses our highways in Pennington County needs to have a sheriff's and a highway department sign off on it and then come back to this?
With all due respect, I don't consider ditches part of the highway roadway. The roadway is the driving surface.
But they should have a liability and insurance, George, and they should be on the side of the road. They could be hit like a bike could or a runner could. Because they still get on the rightway and on the side of the road and sometimes in the road to clean up some of that garbage.
Mr. Chair, like I said, my, my intent is to write a policy for the use of the roadway. If we want another policy for walking the ditches, riding the ditches, cleaning up the ditches, whatever, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, when we've done things like this, that's pretty extensive. We've certainly had Jay Alderman be a part of that. And we've had, given him some definition of what it is we want to, to really define as, as the actions of, that will require those kinds of permits. I, I guess one thing that caught my mind, because rightofways do include the ditch area, that might not, I mean, that, that would be a legal term we'd need to look at too. So I, I think maybe there need, if, if you want to pursue this, this needs to be a committee that is put together with legal highway and, and the sheriff's department. And, and maybe they can be the ones that come up with this since they deal with it in a day-to-day basis.
Commissioner Troutman, I also think that before this policy's made up, you should meet with people that do bike races and, and running events and different things that use our highway to get their input instead of just having it come up from the highway. And the sheriffs maybe have a meeting or something, George, that involves the public in what they think about what we're doing.
I think among other things, the fact that the legislature this last time specified how many feet away you had to be from a bicyclist at a certain speed would suggest that the state and their activity would be an element to consider as well. And among other things, I've never seen anything that defined the responsibility of a bicyclist or a pedestrian or one of these skater-type ski deals going down the road in terms of their own personal safety. It's almost like everybody's got to look out for me while I'm doing my thing. And, but I, I do think if we were to establish a policy, it should be comprehensive enough to recognize that something at state level may override anything we do. And so it's, it's not a slam dunk.
So you might be doing it just in false pretense.
All right, I worry my, folks at the statute said that local authorities, and I presume that's us, do have final say on bicycle races. And that specifically talks about bicycle races. And, and I believe the highway already has a form that they use and, and it's been going on for, and I want to elevate that away from the highway. The highway shouldn't be, and put that position to be okay in bike races. Those roads, county roads belong to the county, not just the county highway superintendent or the sheriff. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I just want to respond to that. One of the things that I think is important for the highway department to have input on is, I mean, they're familiar with the kind of traffic count and sorts of things that we as a commission would not be. So I, I do think we don't want to take away their input for sure.
Oh, absolutely not. I, you know, give me some credit for trying to write a policy okay. I would certainly bring the sheriff and highway guy into it.
But, Mr. Chair, I want to go back to the fact that we generally, as commissioners, don't write the policies. It's, it's, we form a committee and we ask the people that are dealing with it to come together and write the policy based on their experience. Because we as commissioners just don't have that kind of experience. And then they bring it to us, and certainly commissioners have input, but we aren't the ones responsible for it. We ask someone to do that for us.
And here's that, is there that many of these that we, we really need to make this policy? Yeah, per year, so.
And full disclosure, they always come in front of the commissioners. The highway superintendent just doesn't arbitrarily approve them.
Yeah.
He brings them to you guys to approve his signature.
And I'm, and I'm in agreement as, George, with the highway department and the sheriff. I thought that was good policy or just good thinking on your part to bring that forward for the sheriff and the highway to work together. But I don't think we need a policy. I think we have an understanding that that's what was going to happen.
It might be useful, George, if you saw fit to bring kind of an outline of, of what you would propose as a policy that if need be could be fleshed out by people with, with the right background. Nothing to prevent you from doing that.
That's what I offered.
Committee reports.
I do not have any, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I went to community health board meeting here last week, and they're progressing with their building. They anticipate moving into it this fall, new building.
Okay, any other committee reports?
I guess I could, I went to Black Hills Vision meeting, and they have some people that were talking about if the Veterans Administration up in Hot Springs, their plan didn't go through, that they wanted to look for a plan B and help from Black Hills Vision. The other was Habitat for Humanity, might be looking for some money from Black Hills Vision. They want to redo the area over by Garfield, the school there, and do some exciting stuff over there. So that was what was presented at Black Hills Vision. No decisions made. We always push it on from the board to the people that run it. So that doesn't sound quite right. But people that make the decisions, we just listen to their proposals. Thank you.
Any, any others?
Let me mention just one more thing. I talked about it briefly, about flooding. And I know it's not a committee report, but I've been going to Hill City Council meetings, and a couple of meetings ago, they raised the issue of FEMA has, and I haven't seen that document, so I don't need to qualify it that way, but the city administrator said that FEMA has the flow of Spring Creek at a hundred-year flood stage at almost eighty-five hundred, you know, eight thousand four hundred and some CFS. Now, you heard Dustin talk about inflows into Pactola, seven hundred and eighteen. Inflows into Pactola, Rapid Creek, Oliver's Lake Creek, where I live, all that's all combined going to Pactola, seven hundred and eighteen CFS. Yet FEMA's got Spring Creek through Hill City at eight thousand something. I think it's incumbent upon us to say, hey FEMA, come out here and take a look. Come out and do some measuring. Think what that does to floodplain insurance. Think what that does to floodplain permits. And on and on and on and on. Tremendous difference, a factor of ten. If the flow, if the flow at the peak through Rapid, or Spring Creek at Hill City was eight, eight hundred, that'd been high. But multiply that by ten. Thank you.
Taking the tour of Spring Creek, it was amazing to see, you guys, how many people are right next to the creek and that build next to the creek. I don't know if they still let them in Hill City, build next to the creek or in the floodway, if there's rules and regs differently. But that's a big concern, just going through Spring Creek and hearing the water, just even without the flows that we have now, that they've been underwater in that park area and stuff. It's, it's pretty crazy, George, on some of the creek areas, how close people are building or, or I know you can build parks in them, but how much they flood already without having those kind of flows and that people still want to build next to them. And you have to take in consideration that if you want to build, and that was my point today, if you want to build in a flood area or a floodplain area by a creek, it's beautiful when it's not flooding. But when it is, there's consequences, so.
But I'm not aware of any new residences. They've been there like forever.
Yeah, there was a bunch when we went with Brittany and those guys with the Spring Creek watershed stuff. It was pretty amazing, George.
New residences along Spring Creek.
Maybe not new, but.
I'll take your word for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We, we had an informational meeting on, on the rail, railroad and the rail authority and RCP and E proposal relative to a tiger grant the other day. And it was enlightening. And just to let you know that they're doing all they can to improve service. Any other committee reports?
I might comment, Mr. Chair. When they said ten miles an hour on one stretch of the road, did you catch that or? Or, did you catch that, Nancy? Talk about ten miles an hour out there in the open country because of the condition of the track.
Between midland and pier. Between midland and pier.
Yeah.
Hundred, about 100 miles of track, and at 10 miles an hour. It, pretty exciting.
Yeah.
You'll see the countryside well. Lots of time.
Okay, items from the public.
Dan Richer, I've mentioned this to the other boards, and I'm gonna mention again, you had your executive session, number 11. There were 13 county employees sitting in here or out in the hall while you guys were doing your executive session. And most of them were pretty well-paid. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we are looking for a motion to go into executive session, and we'll count the county employees that are here.
One.
One. Two.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Hey, do we have a motion?
To go out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Never mind. Just never mind.
Are we adjourning?
Please.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, since it's our second, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.